Calling this meeting of the August 22nd, 2017, meeting of the Mayor and Commissioners of the Town of Rising Sun to order. Town Administrator may have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Arthur Rees.
Here.
Commissioner Braun.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Warnock.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all the elected officials are in attendance with the exception of Commissioner Pearson, who has an excused absence, and Mayor Marion, who has an excused absence.
He excused himself, correct. So with that, Pledge of Allegiance? Paul Rose, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to hold a moment of silence for all those recent attacks against officers, all those officers that have put themselves in harm's way, as well as those in the Barcelona and Campbell's areas, as well as other areas that have been recently attacked by terrorism, and all those in harm's way. Town Administrator, do we have any public presentations?
No.
Do we have any business meeting items?
No.
Okay. Do we have any citizens' input? I'm gonna say probably not. Staff reports. Thank you for the blank sheet, babe. Chief, do you have a staff report?
Yes, I do. Hold the fastest speed ever.
Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor, Commissioners. For the period of August 9th through the 22nd, we responded to 239 calls for service. The officers and myself used 40 hours of vacation. We had eight hours of training. During that time period, we took reports for two possession of drugs, one first-degree assault, a theft, malicious destruction of property. Two arrests were made for possession of heroin. One was made for possession, one was made for theft from a motor vehicle, one for disloyal misconduct, two arrests for fugitive warrants, and one arrest for a fugitive from another area. In the traffic enforcement, 24 stops were made along Main Street, two on Queen Street, six on Mount Street, one on Pearl Street, and six on the other roads around town. As a follow-up to previous meetings, Commissioner Pearson wanted me to pass along that the Fire and EMS Appreciation Breakfast is now scheduled for Friday, the 13th of October at Ford's Funeral Home Banquet Hall. With that being said, that is my report unless there's any questions.
You said October 13th?
Yes, sir.
Did he say what time he was gonna start?
Typically, it starts at 8:00 a.m., but I'd have to confirm those times.
Okay.
Thank you.
Town Administrator, do you have a report?
Yeah, I have a short one. I'd like to take the opportunity to showcase what some of our employees have been doing. As you're aware, during the budget process, we spoke about purchasing equipment that would enable our employees to be able to expand upon the responsibilities, but more importantly, to tap into the skills that they have to do some street repairing, sidewalk repair, storm drain repairs, et cetera. So we used the money that we would normally be spending on contractors, and we purchased some equipment. And the first one you're seeing here is a mini excavator that we purchased, and this is being used up in the Bryant's Grace development to take care of some collapsing stormwater drains. This is always interesting when you talk about the collapsing stormwater drains, because this is another development where the developer basically skipped their responsibilities in the construction project, and there's really nothing that the town can do about that. So we are faced with repairing things that should not be breaking down as quickly as they are. This clearly is not the first storm drain that we've had to repair in the Bryant's Grace development, but at least we're getting equipment that's allowing our personnel to be able to move and get out there a lot quicker and do it more efficiently. Here you see the picture of them, you know, they've removed the grating off the top, and they're in the process of rebuilding the walls of the stormwater drain in order to cement that all in and then put the grates on top of it. The picture doesn't completely show, but you see some of the equipment that we purchased in the past. In addition to that mini excavator is that dump trailer off to your, that you see off to the left on the picture. In this year's budget, we also picked up a couple of used construction trailers that allow us to haul all of that equipment. As you guys know, when we've had issues in the past, we were shuttling employees back and forth to drive and pick up different pieces of equipment. And so the mobilization was excessively long to deal with an issue. And then unfortunately, it could be 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, it's been raining all night, and a bad snowstorm, and these guys, after they're done fixing something and getting everybody's water tone back on, they might have another hour and a half to two hours of cleanup, just getting the equipment out of there. So one of the things we did is invest in trailers that allow some of this equipment, like the mini excavator, the little skid loader that we have, the roller, and some other things, all to be put up on a single trailer, a single trailer in some cases, and double trailers in other cases. So it helps them be much more efficient in what they are doing. Here is a picture of the new vibrating roller that we picked up for them. This roller, if you remember, a couple months ago, I showed you the picture of the roller that they rented from a local contractor to do the repairs on Wilson. Our roller is actually bigger than the one that the contractor has been using. So you will see in the weekly reports that we are beginning to distribute to you again, you'll be able to see the areas of potholes and blacktop that they're now able to effectively get in and repair. I was asked by a Commissioner earlier about, you know, what was my impression of the way the Public Works employees were embracing this new equipment. Not only the new equipment, but if you recall, we decided to outsource the grass cutting this year. And I can tell you that the employees are actually very enthused about it. They feel much more productive. The example I gave is especially with all the rain we've had over the last couple of weeks, months, really, that if you get three days in a week's time where it's nice and sunny to do something, our guys no longer have to worry about taking up one of those days that they could be fixing blacktop or doing sidewalks, but in the past, they couldn't do it because they had to catch up on high grass growing in the parks because it was raining all the time. So not only does it make their jobs much more efficient, it's also making them a lot more effective at being able to do more work in repairing our roads and sidewalks. So that's one thing I wanted to highlight you on. The other thing is from a building inspection standpoint, we are generating a lot of building permits right now. I've always said you can see when the economy is getting a little bit better, just basically that people are now, some people are getting in a position where they can start to invest in their homes. So we have seen probably about 25 or so solar panel installations in the last 12 months or so. We probably are getting maybe seven to eight HVAC system replacements, where people are now in a position to invest in upgrading their HVAC units, which is good to some degree because the units that are being produced now are much more efficient than the units that were produced 10, 15, 20 years ago. So there's a double benefit to resonate on that. We're also starting to see an uptick in people that are interested in doing things with their properties that may or may not require special exceptions and variances. So that's another positive sign of things turning around economically for the community. This past Thursday, on August 17th, we conducted an orientation meeting with the Board of Appeals. The Board of Appeals doesn't get a chance to meet very often, and we have essentially, five of the board members have, all but one of them has been replaced with new faces. So we wanted to get them together to get to know each other and also to vote their officers in for the next year. And Bernie Chiamento, we all recognize Bernie Chiamento as having been a past, I believe, Planning Commission member way back in the day, and I believe he served two separate stints as a Board of Commissioner with the Town of Rising Sun. So he was now elected to be the Chairperson of the Board of Appeals. A newcomer, Jessica, and I hope I pronounce her name right, Gallatin.
That's right.
She is really enthusiastic about participating in town government, and she was appointed to the Board of Appeals, and she was voted in as the Vice Chairman of the Board of Appeals. They do have a meeting coming up this, coming Monday night, the 28th, to deal with a variant or a special exception request for the New Way of Life Church, and the Board is very anxious to get going with their duties as a Board of Appeals member. And that really is pretty refreshing, because as you know, we've had a hard time filling positions on that board. Also, a couple of members on both the Planning Commission and the Board of Appeals have fulfilled the requirements and obligations under Maryland state law to have a certain level of training as a member of the Board of Appeals and the Planning Commission. On behalf of the Planning Commission itself, I want to thank Commissioner Warnock, who took a couple hours, and Commissioner Braun, who took a couple hours, I believe it was last Monday night, and sat down with those prospective board members and helped them go through the modules that you have to take a test on. And so we're starting to see certificates come in. So that's a good sign also. From an economic development standpoint, the, a reminder that the Dollar General is, the public hearing for the annexation for Dollar General is scheduled on the docket for next Tuesday evening at 7:00, the 29th. And that's where the public will have an opportunity to come out and hear the overall proposal of Dollar General to want to annex in the town, and they can render their comments, either for, against, or ask any kind of questions that they might have. And that concludes my report.
Do we have any, I'm assuming Historical Preservation Commission report, there isn't one tonight. Do we have any old business? Do we have any new business?
I have new business.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to get a couple of small committees together to look into the feasibility of creating advisory committees. An advisory committee could assist the elective body, it could bring citizens' views to the elective body, and it could provide expertise in certain areas without incurring expenses. To begin looking into this, I am looking for people that are interested in insurance and/or finance. This would be people in the insurance business that have experience or expertise in that area, or people in finance that would have a banking background, investments, accounting. If anyone is interested in getting together to discuss the possibility of forming an advisory committee in these areas, I would ask that they call Town Hall and leave your name and telephone number, and I would get back to them, and we could discuss this. In this regard, and for these two committees, we would ask for our residents and also non-residents from the outlying areas. Thank you.
Thank you. So actually, I'm gonna go ahead and go into Commissioners' comments. Commissioner Arthur Rees.
Okay. Calvin, can you put the picture of me and that police officer up? Well, Calvin's looking for that. I have a, if you can turn that one around, that's a nice one.
That's Lieutenant Governor, actually.
Turn that one around. Just to echo on what Commissioner was saying before about, you know, what's happened with our police officers out in other states lately. This summer, I was down in my hometown of Abingdon, Virginia, it's about 460 miles from here, and was down visiting some relatives, a little mini-vacation, and I stopped into the police department there, and Chief Peterson put together a little package for me to give to those guys, some of our cups and coffee cups, and also a couple of things that police officers like to trade. So this is a picture of me and Officer Tate modeling one of our love, I love Rising Sun And it was pretty amazing to see the police station, the police station there that was one time in a building about the size of our old town hall, now being a big building the size of our current town hall. So just kinda wanted to share that as we, you know, as you can see the stuff on the chairs behind, we donated some book bags also for them to give to needy kids there. So just wanted to show, you know, that while we've been Commissioners, we haven't just stuck to the Cecil County area. We've promoted the town outside of here. We promoted very heavily this year at the Maryland Municipal League Conference. We had a strong showing of the whole Board, including all the Commissioners, the Mayor, the Chief, and our Town Administrator this summer. So we're really, as we're trying to build economic development for the community, this Board has been out there, outside of the community, outside of the state, getting the name of Rising Sun out there. So just wanted to kinda share that with you. The other picture, Calvin, if you wanna show it, because it's just, this summer, we all, I think this was early spring, the whole Board attended an event that Lieutenant Governor Boyd Rutherford was in Chesapeake City, and we went and talked to him about, we thanked him for what the Governor had done for us with the grant money. We also explained to him our situation with our sewer plant, and we still have work to do there. And we had a, we had a good time with him. We actually had his undivided attention for a little while, and we kind of encircled him, and everybody had an opportunity to speak with him, and Calvin was able to explain to him in some detail what we've been doing with our sewer plant. And this administration, Governor Hogan, Lieutenant Governor Rutherford, have been very interested in what's going on in Cecil County, and have been up this year, not just to, as an obligatory visit, but to actually come up and see what's happening and how they can help. So just wanted to share that, too. One other thing, on, a couple other things tonight. On the water project, that we haven't had a lot to talk about lately, but tonight, I do have the pleasure of announcing that August 31st, we are gonna be entering the bid phase for our Chester Water Line, which is gonna be a great boost to this town. It's gonna give us a dependability on water that we didn't have in the past when we would have drought conditions, everybody trying to pull off the same underground well. We wound up in, with a shortage. So this is gonna be a big boost for the town, and we're a significant milestone closer to that happening. We've actually finally got the approval of MDE to move forward with bids, and as of right now, the bid phase will start August 31st. And we have some other dates that we'll share as they're more concrete going forward, but we hope that we will have a groundbreaking ceremony near the end of September, early October, and by that time, also be announcing the winner of the bids and notice to proceed. So one other thing I wanted to talk about tonight, because we've got some more good news for those of you in the audience. We showed this back, earlier this winter-spring, the Mayor had a Saturday meet-and-greet event that we put on for those who normally couldn't come out. And one of the things we talked about that day was this yellow line is the Okrara Railroad bed through the Town of Rising Sun. And for a few years now, Commissioner Warnock and myself, during our time on the planning Board, had talked about turning this into a walking and bicycle path. And this year, I talked to our Town Administrator and said, hey, let's talk to the county and make this happen. We spoke with Commissioner Schneckenberger, who's our local representative. He was on board with it and supported it. And we just recently got, just this past week, email that the county is moving forward. They're looking to find the meets and bounds and description of the property and move forward with the transfer. And this would be from Route 274 to 272 initially. This would fall into a lot of our parks and recreation, which would be another long job for Commissioner Warnock. And between him and Calvin writing grants, there's a lot of money out there for rails to trails. And we hope that with the success of this, it can eventually be extended down to the Susquehanna and meet up with the trails coming out of Port Deposit. And this would be a great boost to the Town of Rising Sun. Lot of us get out and walk for exercise and health benefits, and we do it looking over our shoulder for traffic at the intersections and all. So this would be a great place for, you know, people to go and walk without having to worry about traffic. We also would be able to do much other things with this in the future, but to start with, we wanna, we wanna make it happen. And it looks like now, with the work of our Town Administrator, myself, and Commissioner Warnock, that it's gonna happen. So we get it transferred over, and then start doing the design, and hopefully, we'll be breaking ground on this in the very near future, too. So that's, that's something I'm very happy about. And I think that's all I have tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Arthur Rees. Commissioner Braun, do you have an update?
I do.
Okay. I've got a few things on my update tonight. Calvin, if you can pull up some of those pictures. There's also a couple videos there that are kinda neat. So we've had a lot going on in the parks, obviously, and I'm gonna get into a little bit more detail on that, and I appreciate you, I appreciate Commissioner Arthur Rees' help with getting that advanced, because we've been, you know, kinda stalled a couple times, and I think you had some opportunities while dealing with some of the discussions on water, sir. This is actually a section of the stream. Actually, I have kind of a, this is before the rainstorm, so this is actually some of the new features within the stream design. As you can see, it's a nice little tranquil waterfall, you can close that one. And there's another video right next to it. That didn't really play right.
Will those logs stay in place, Dave?
They will.
They don't have to worry about them washing away?
They're actually forming a V-shaped pattern. I don't understand why it was not playing, but they're in a V-shaped pattern that's actually pointed upstream, so as water comes down, it, you know, they're pushed into the bank, so it's designed. And the point of those logs are actually to channel the stream back to the center. So during a flood event, and I don't know why the video's not playing, but we actually had a flood event this weekend in the park, and it didn't leave the banks of the streambed restoration. So the good news is, all that work being done there, especially down by the culvert down at Hopewell Road, seems to be paying off in that we didn't have the level of flooding we would normally expect for the kind of rainfall we had. So I'm kinda excited about that. Calvin, I'm not, it's not playing, I'm not worried about. It was, we have some pictures that kinda show the same thing. So if you can open up, there's three folders there. One is Park, Parks. Go ahead and open that one.
Yeah, I see the Parks. You want me to start at pictures?
Start at Parks, yeah.
At 8:17, or all the pictures that are in here?
Just go ahead and start with them, and I'll kinda have you go through them. So just various pictures of the work going on, and you can actually see there in the center that there's two logs, there's like a V-pattern there in the center with a little bit of water. That's actually two of the logs, yeah, right there. That's actually that log formation. There's gonna be four of those in the streambed from...
I ask you, did they do just one?
They did four of them, actually. And one of the reasons that it's located there is because they wanted to channel the water back to the center for the bridge, so that we don't have erosion under the bridge, and that helps reduce the erosion under the bridge.
So were they able to do this work without taking the bridge out?
They've, they've worked around the bridge. Yep. So right there, you can kinda see how it, you know, forces the water back to the center.
What they call the tow wood?
The tow wood's a little further upstream, and they haven't done a whole lot, but they've only done one section of tow wood so far. I do have pictures of that, but I'm trying to remember the actual term for this, but you can see now with the stream flowing again, it's actually not very much of a drop there. The second one's a little more of a drop, but they do have like a nice little waterfall sound to them. So it's kinda neat, because we'll have four places along the stream where you'll have something of a, sound of water running over those logs. So, and there's some of these pictures you'll see kind of with the stream drained down and with the stream filled back up. And you can see how it's a nice clean shot down to the culverts now, so it's definitely made a difference with the flow of the water. That pond right there, that V is about two feet deep, so there's some pretty deep areas for the kids to play in right there near the bridge. Upstream a little ways, there's actually an area that's really deep, probably closer to three foot, so where the project starts. They've kinda skipped over a section, and they're now working the other end of the project and working their way back down. So this is actually all the way to the other end. They cleared out some of the woods there to the right. A lot of that was green bri, I'm sorry, multi-flower rose, which is an invasive species, so we're happy to have a lot of that removed. And actually, right here, some of that tow wood section. So you can see it's a curvature, actually, right there. You see the logs into it, and then they use the stumps and everything to create reinforcement into the bank.
Have you seen your heron?
We haven't seen a heron recently, but we have, we've had a hawk that was eating fish the other day. The one day they drained the stream down, they had like a salamander, a two-foot eel, a snake, a snapping turtle, a bunch of stuff, and they just kinda stuck it all in the one little area. So they might've had like a little death match in that area afterwards. I don't know. I'm not sure what the food chain is between a snapping turtle, a salamander, yeah, salamander and eel and a snake. I'm just not sure the order of the food chain on that one, but I'm sure it wasn't necessarily good for at least one of them, maybe two or three of them. So, you know, these are just various pictures of the work as it's going on. The pumps, there's a couple different pumps here. You'll see this is actually dirty water, and that one, they pump just out into the grass to allow it to kind of drain back in clean. The other line that's running up further is actually a clean water line, so that pumps the stream around while they're working. So it's a pretty neat process. It's, you know, if anybody wants to go over and see what's going on, you know, if they're working, just try not to get around everybody's bulldozers, that's all they ask. But, you know, if you want me to go over and join you for any of the tour of it, I'm more than happy to. So actually, if you wanna close this, and we should pull up the flood pictures real quick. So we have had our first flood event in the middle of construction, which we were a little concerned about the damage it might do, and it actually, everything survived pretty well.
Wow.
It's actually kind of interesting, because it, being it's now wider, it actually channels it a lot better. And the, before, where it was so narrow, it would easily go out of the banks and up into the park. Now it's got more room in that channel to go down through there.
Didn't erode the sides of the banks?
I really thought that was gonna be the case. They did a pretty good job of stabilizing it, so that they didn't get a lot of erosion.
That's a lot of water.
It was a lot of water. So, and it's, you know, it's, right there is where that one channel comes out of the woods. And right there is where, uh, that one channel comes out of the woods.
Is that the one that comes down from like our Public Works Building?
Correct. Yep. So, and that's also where that bridge will be built here soon. So it, it was good to see that it wasn't up in, you know, with incursions into where the bridge is going eventually. So anyway, that's kind of where we're at on, on, uh, the park project. Some interesting news, um, as of Friday, uh, the bids were, uh, reviewed for the remainder of the project. And the bid was, um, the low bidder was EcoTone. And which, uh, EcoTone's been really good to work with. So, um, they're more than qualified to complete the project. And, uh, as a result, we're moving, uh, forward with, um, awarding. We actually sent them a, you know, we, we directed the project manager to send them a letter, uh, notifying them that they've been awarded the bid, um, as of, uh, Friday. So, uh, I don't know if, uh, I assume EcoTone knows at this point. But their bid came in, the budget for the project for the remainder, for remaining section, the remaining two sections of the project were, uh, for the bio-retention, a hundred and twenty-six thousand. And for the, uh, RSC, the, the section up behind the Public Works Buildings, the, the retention ponds, was, uh, two hundred and twenty-two thousand was for a total budget of three hundred and forty-eight thousand. And their bid came in at three hundred and thirteen thousand. So they came in, um, substantially lower than some of the other bidders. The other bidders, actually all of the other bidders, they came in about a hundred thousand less than any of the other bidders. And, um, EcoTone does a great job. They did the Triangle Dog Park. They're doing all the current work over at Veterans Community Park. So, so we're, um, you know, I'm, I'm not concerned about, you know, that it's going to be, that their low bid is going to indicate some low qualities on the high. You know, it's, they're, they're on site. They've already got the equipment deployed. So they know that they can do it at a reduced cost because they don't have to worry about that deployment. So that was part of their, their philosophy on it. And, um, they, uh, they really wanted to work on the remainder of this project. I also had a opportunity to meet with the CEO of EcoTone and discuss some other opportunities within the town, uh, that are, um, pretty promising and, uh, pretty exciting and would help the town with, uh, some of our RS four requirements. Or MS four, not RS four, I was thinking RSC, MS four requirements. And, uh, so there's some good opportunities there that I hope to, at some point in the future, have more information on. Uh, I had a meeting last week with, uh, Maryland Department of Natural Resources, our project, uh, sponsor. So the, um, person from Kerry Decker from DNR who awarded us the grant. She came out to kind of see how things were going as well as, uh, to also see some of the other opportunities. We were working on some additional grants at this point. And, uh, so we talked about some of those grants. We also went over to the dog park and looked at kind of how that's come along. And, um, talked about the remainder section, remaining sections of the boardwalk to be completed by Eagle Scouts. Uh, so they were really happy with the way the dog park looks. It's, it's come out really nice. The plantings and such have come out really well. And we've only lost like from that batch of trees we planted last year, I think, one tree. So, um, we've done pretty well over there. We also talked about some other opportunities, uh, possible fifteen acres of wetlands that might be able to get an open space grant to acquire as well as, um, possibly some open space grants for some other, uh, features that's in town, like a new playground in, um, Richardson Park. So a lot of different things going on with, uh, the parks, with, uh, DNR, with grants. Uh, we also had a meeting with, uh, uh, Brian Seep from Center for Watershed Protection, as well as Rupert Rosetti from the Octoraro Watershed Association, Eric Buell from the, uh, University of Maryland Extension School, Sea Grant School. And talked about, uh, additional grants. Uh, Octoraro Watershed Association's going to actually be the lead on a grant for engineering of a Phase Two of the project we're doing over at the park. That would include, um, some additional storm water management behind the ballfields to try and reduce some of the flooding to the back end of the ballpark as well as handle some of the water coming off of the parking lot and the roof of the church. Um, additionally, it would address some of the water coming off of two seventy-four spilling over the sidewalk at the church. Uh, we're also looking at, um, the whole sub watershed. It was, uh, like fifteen acres of area that we're looking to treat. So, um, we were actually, that storm worked out well the other day. I was able to get some good pictures of some of the different areas where water's running on that project. So hopefully we, we can redirect that water into areas where we can slow it down, soak it in. And, uh, over time, continue to reduce that flooding in the park as well as improve the water quality, both in Stone Run and the Chesapeake Bay. So a lot of really exciting things going on. Uh, Commissioner, or Vice Minister, I'm sorry.
I think the trails that you've built back in the woods will also, uh, connect to the.
Yes.
The railroad bed too, was part of why we, we really wanted to get that in there. So some of the ones that you've worked on that go behind the, the upper stream.
Yep.
And then behind the Public Works current building. We can build a trail and steps right up to the, the path there. So somebody could walk from the Veterans Park down the railroad bed and.
Yeah, so we're, we have a number of Eagle Scout projects we're working on. One is a, well, we have, at the dog park, two Eagle Scout projects to complete the boardwalk over to the learning platform and then transition down into the grass. So I, uh, met with those Eagle Scouts again Thursday and, um, discussed, uh, the projects. And we're meeting again this Thursday to go over the plans. And, uh, we're going to try and get the footers in, in the next couple of months so that, um, at least if, if the project does wind up going a little bit into the wintertime, at least we'll have all the work into the ground done before it freezes. So, uh, that's exciting. We've, the trails over at Veterans Park, uh, we've had a couple of discussions, both with the CEO of EcoTone and Department of Natural Resources about some different options there to try and reduce the needs for wetlands permits. Because there's, uh, permits are quite expensive. And I'd rather focus the money on building a boardwalk than applying for wetlands permits because there's certain things we can do that don't require permits and certain things that do. If we do boardwalks, we can potentially avoid the permits because they would sit on the surface. So there's some different options there. I'm a little concerned about being close to the stream washing away. So we're, we're trying to come up with some of the best options there. The, uh, CEO of EcoTone was, is a very big trail proponent. And he was very excited about the potential and, and, um, had a lot of good ideas, like potentially a suspension bridge. He was very interested in the project and, uh, he was also very interested in Rails, the Trails Project. And some, he said that sometimes EcoTone gets involved in those sort of projects. As a goodwill gesture, they would come out and help us get some of that construction done. So, um, there's a, a lot of opportunity there that we're hopefully going to take advantage of. A, there's actually some other, uh, things coming up that I hope to have more information on soon. And, um, there are some really good opportunities for the town. I, I, a couple of them, like, I aren't quite ready to be discussed yet. But, uh, I, um, if they go the way we hope and we've got some really good opportunities with, with trails and such around the town, recreational amenities. So, uh, I'm hoping all that works out. Next movies in the park, the, the previous movies in the park, unfortunately, due to, uh, the very extensive rainstorm that, um, caused, uh, flooding in the park. We, uh, had to cancel the movie because, well, it was wet everywhere in town. So, um, again, we, uh, the rain has not been very friendly to us this year for movies in the park, which is pretty typical for movies in the park. Uh, we always seem to wind up canceling movies for rain. The next showing as a result is this Friday. We're going to try it again. Hopefully the weather holds. Uh, that will be sang at Kilby Cream. The following Friday, we have, um, Beauty and the Beast at Richardson Park. And that will be, uh, the live-action Beauty and the Beast, not the cartoon. And then two weeks after that, we have, um, Star Wars Rogue One. So it's, it's going to be a real busy.
Back-to-back.
Back-to-back on movies in the park. Um, I'm praying that the weather holds because it's, it's not been a good year for that. And if, uh, we have another rain cancellation, I guess we'll just back-to-back, just squeeze them in wherever we can at this point. All those movies start at eight-thirty. And like I said, the next one, this coming Friday, the twenty-fifth, I believe it is, is at, uh, Kilby Cream. So, uh, and then the one, the Monday after, I think is, I'm sorry, the Friday after, I believe is, uh, September first. And that one will be at Richardson Park. And, um, so a lot going on in Parks and Rec. We also have, uh, a dedication scheduled for, um, I'm sure a lot of folks in, in town remember Reverend Jones from, uh, James United Methodist Church. We are doing the dedication of the, uh, of Jones Way on, Reverend Jones Way, rather, on, um, September sixteenth. And I think that's at nine AM. And to what Commissioner Althamree was talking about with the Rails to Trails. The, uh, we're, in addition to the length of Rails to Trails as you showed on the map, there's also some, uh, connections to the parks because two of the parks run immediately adjacent to that rail line. And we'll be able to immediately connect those two parks upon completion of that small section of the Rails to Trails. There's a, also an opportunity in the future to connect, uh, the dog park into that through a combination of, uh, parcels of land. Then if we can get that trail in, that'll be a really cool trail because it'll run right down through Wetlands area. And it'll probably take a boardwalk. And that's going to be a, that's a little bit longer-term project to complete that. But, um, and then there's, uh, some other potential, uh, projects need, are closely associated with that. Um, if it all comes together, it'll be, it'll, it'll really be something. So I look forward to, to continuing that. And on that note, uh, I'd actually like to announce my candidacy. I plan to, uh, run for reelection for Rising Sun Town Commissioner. I, uh, have a lot of projects kind of underway. And I'd like to see those projects through as well as some of the additional planning phases. And, uh, hopefully execution. We've gotten a lot done in the last three, about three years. In, uh, Veterans Park, we've gotten trails built, bridges built, um, stream bed restoration grant. And, uh, in the dog park, we've gotten a learning platform and, and about half the boardwalk completed. And I look forward to completing that section of the boardwalk with the scouts as well as, uh, continuing those other sections and, and going out and trying to get those additional grants to do those other things. I also, with the water and sewer situation hopefully being rectified here soon, I look to aggressively work to, uh, uh, bring economic development particularly to our downtown area and, um, continue the forward motion of the town that we've been working so hard at for the last three years. So, and, uh, hopefully if the citizens of Rising Sun will have me back, I, I look forward to continuing to work with this board, one of those projects. So with that, I believe that is, uh, everything I have to say tonight. Is there, uh, anything else anybody would like to bring up?
Uh, we have some announcements on page two.
We do?
Yes.
Oh.
Vice Minister, the list is not meant to be read completely through.
Yeah, we.
I'm using it as an opportunity. If people came at attendance, they could get the updated.
Gotcha. So.
I would hit the highlights.
Okay. Well, I'll just read the upcoming meetings. The Board of Zoning Appeals, uh, will be meeting on August twenty-eighth at six-thirty PM to discuss PZAK seventeen dash oh-one. Uh, the, there will be a public hearing of this board on August twenty-ninth at seven PM to discuss the, uh, four oh-one Telegraph Road annexation. That is the Dollar General, uh, parcel. Uh, the next town meeting after that will be September twelfth at seven PM here in Town Hall. And then the Planning Commission next meets on September eighteenth of twenty-seventeen at six-thirty PM. And I believe that's just a general meeting at this point. There's, just kind of continue the progress of the planning. So there's nothing on the agenda at this point for any, anything specific. Um, I believe we still have, do we still have all of these openings?
Yes.
Okay, so we still have, uh, we're still looking for citizens of the town to, um, consider filling positions on the Planning Commission. There's two positions open on that board. The Board of Zoning Appeals has one position. The Ethics Board, uh, is one of those boards I don't think has to be a town citizen necessarily.
That is correct.
So that one, there's one position open there. And then the Board of Election Judges, there's one position open. And, uh, that one's particularly important to get filled since we have a election coming up in October. So if anybody's interested in that. The town has, actually I believe it's two upcoming holidays. Uh, Labor Day, which is not on here, is, uh, Monday, September fourth, I believe. And then the following holiday after that is Veterans Day, which, uh, we will observe as Town Hall on, uh, Monday, November thirteenth since, uh, the eleventh, which is normally Veterans Day, falls on a Saturday. And I think we went through all of the other stuff last meeting.
Yes.
I don't feel like we'll need to go through that necessarily again. And just a reminder, um, town elections are Monday, October sixteenth. And polls are open from eight AM to eight PM. And voter registration deadline is Friday, September fifteenth at five PM. And you have to register with the county. Uh, you can actually go onto the state's website and register online pretty quickly. And then the last day to register as a candidate is Friday, September sixteenth at six PM. And the last day to request an absentee ballot is Friday, October sixth at five PM. And absentee ballots are due on Mon- by Monday, October sixteenth, uh, at seven fifty-nine PM. Is there anything else to come before the board tonight?
No.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay. All in favors? Aye?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.